Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen, Hanson Board of Selectmen Meeting. Tonight is April 28th and we are at six o'clock and we are meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Cable Access. And this meeting is convening by go-to meeting, which is a teleconference that's posted on the town's website. You can also listen to it live streaming on Whitman Hanson Cable Access Television. In terms of the ground rules, I'm going to introduce each speaker. After they conclude their remarks, we'll go down the line of members, inviting each member to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and speak as clearly as possible to help prayer and taking minutes. Every vote that we take will be conducted by roll call in order to comply with the regulations. So as a preliminary matter, I just want to make sure that everybody participating tonight's meeting is present. So I'm going to call your name and if you could just respond in the affirmative. Mr. Dyer.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Hickey.
Here.
Mr. Boss.
Here.
Ms. Kepson.
Here.
Mr. Sandbrook.
Here.
Representative Cutler.
I'm here.
And Mr. Hassett.
Here.
Okay, great. So without further ado, if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, Mr. Boss, may I ask you to do the public announcements in upcoming meetings?
There are no public announcements tonight. The upcoming meetings are May 5 and May 19 at 6:00 PM, the Hanson Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to new business and we're thrilled that Representative Cutler, Josh Cutler, was able to join us this evening and thank you, Representative Cutler, for all of the fine work that you're doing out there, keeping us up to date. And we're hoping that you can give us an update on what is happening at the state with coronavirus issues and any other issues that you think might be important for us to know about.
Yes, great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks. I was going to say it's good to see all of you. Oh, that's not quite accurate, but it's good to hear from all of you. I appreciate all the good work that we're doing here in Hanson and all of our cities and towns to deal with this sort of unprecedented situation. So I'll give kind of a quick update and I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have. So basically, obviously, most folks probably heard today, the big news, obviously, that the governor has extended the stay-at-home advisory and the non-essential business closure through May 18th. So another two weeks beyond what was originally determined. He did also announce the formation of a reopening advisory board that's going to be helmed by the Lieutenant Governor with 17 members, including members from the business community, health experts, some elected officials, and a variety of different stakeholders to put together sort of a plan for how the reopening businesses and government, excuse me, reopening businesses would take place and, you know, what kind of stages and steps that would be done through. So we'll be looking to hear from them with some guidance about that, although again, the governor did stress that this is really going to be dictated by the data at the end of the day and the health, you know, the public health data. And so if that continues to trend in the right direction, then I think, you know, we'll see some reopenings after May 18th. If that takes a sudden departure in another direction, then obviously that could change. But so that was the big sort of news for today. Wanted to mention a couple of things that have happened probably since I've talked to you guys last. One, just some legislation that has been passed. The legislature passed and the governor approved a virtual notarization bill. That had been an issue that some folks were concerned about so that if you wanted to get a document notarized, if you needed to sell your home or take other legal action and weren't able to get something notarized, that has now been empowered so you can do a virtual notarization, somewhat similar to the way we're doing it today. Another law that was passed will protect homeowners and tenants from evictions and foreclosures through 45 days post-state of emergency. Also prevents folks from landlords from credit reporting non-payment and prevents most evictions. As we previously talked about, I believe, the last time we chatted, the legislature has passed legislation to give cities and towns some more flexibility when it comes to town elections and town meetings. And I know Hanson has already elected to use out some of that flexibility. As a reminder, the town meeting, I know town meetings are a concern because I, just from talking to folks in the other communities I represent, you do have the ability to extend town meeting and postpone it every 30 days. So if it's deemed that the original timeframe isn't still going to work for the community, then you can postpone it for another 30 days. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. And I know Moderator Sean Keely has been talking to our office about some of those things. So those are sort of some of the things. Immediately, I wanted to tell you also that the legislature itself, you know, we're taking steps, obviously, to adjust to this new, you know, paradigm. And this Thursday, we have scheduled our first formal session virtually, for lack of a better term. There is some legislation that has to be voted on that requires a roll call vote, meaning full participation from every member, you know, on a recorded vote. It has to do with what's called a bond anticipation note, not to put anybody to sleep, but essentially in a quick nutshell, because we delayed the state income tax filing deadline to July to co-align with the federal extension, obviously, all the revenue that would have come in between now and then, you know, the state is not going to see. And because we, you know, still have to have a balanced ledger, we do have to, what we do is we issue short-term borrowing notes to cover that revenue so that when it comes in in July, we're made whole, essentially. So it's called a bond anticipation note, a ban. And so the legislature does need to vote by roll call to authorize that. And so that's going to take place this Thursday. This will be our first ever in the history of the Commonwealth, virtual legislative session. I'm sure there'll be a few hiccups, but we had a meeting about it today, a virtual meeting today, and kind of talked through the process. And I think, you know, I think we have a pretty good handle on it. So I'm explaining all this because I think it's important, number one, for folks to know that that's happening. Number two is that once this is sort of established and we've set up, you know, a framework for how this can occur, then we can at least tentatively move forward with, you know, getting back to these quote-unquote "normal" processes that we, you know, we have to pass legislation and to pass a budget, which is sort of the next biggest thing on the agenda. And obviously, I know that's a concern here in Hanson and, you know, for every city and town. We did have some preliminary discussion about, you know, where we sit with the budget. We heard from some economists and, you know, sort of top budget experts, what we call our consensus revenue forecast that happened last week. And we heard some, you know, fairly dire predictions ranging from a whole of, you know, anywhere from three to potentially $6 billion for the next fiscal year. Obviously, it's still hard to pinpoint that since we're still really in the middle of sort of the acute period here. I would say that, you know, folks may have heard talk of the, I can sort of summarize it, the discussion in four letters. You've probably heard talk about the V-shaped, the as in victory, the V-shaped recovery, where we bounce back up quickly, which is what we're all hoping. There's the U-shaped recovery where things take, you know, quite a bit longer to ramp up, or they do ramp up. There's the L, which is not at all what we want to see, which is where, you know, there is no immediate recovery. And then there's the W, where we have a sort of a sharp recovery, but then a secondary effect as well. So those are sort of the different scenarios that we're looking at and, you know, based on what's happening on the ground and the revenues and such. So a lot of fluid activity, but I think this Thursday, the step of moving forward with, you know, a formal process will help us on the path towards hopefully getting some consensus around this. I can't give you any kind of specific timeframe on when we'll have budget numbers. I can tell you that we've extended our normal process, which normally would have been wrapped up actually this past week. And we expect that to go forward, you know, through to June and July. So, and obviously, we'll have more information that we'll share with you guys, you know, as soon as it comes available. So that's sort of all right. I'll stop here because I've said a lot and if folks have questions about any of that, happy to stop and take any questions or go in any other directions that you might want to talk about.
All right, great. That was a lot to unpack, as they say. I'm just going to go down the line and see if anybody had any questions or comments. Mr. Dyer?
I have one quick question for you, Josh. For economic forecasting, I know we kind of talked about this last time of, do we have any idea what local aid is going to be looking like in the future?
Yep. So, short version is no. I would say, you know, obviously, so we have parallel issues here, Matt. One is, you know, the current fiscal year, FY '20, what we're still in, you know, and, you know, there's, there is some revenue hit there. We actually saw the March revenues came in actually pretty well, which is more a testament to how well it was doing in the beginning of March than a testament to what has happened since. We fully expect April and May, you know, to bottom out completely. But, you know, so anyway, I think it's unlikely that the cities and towns will feel the impact of that directly. It's more likely that the impact felt, obviously, next year when we're talking about fiscal year '21, which was what we're, you know, we're trying to budget for now. I can just speak from experience, you know, from the last time when we had, you know, significant turn down in the economy, the legislature did everything they could to hold harmless cities and towns and make those tough cuts in other places. But it's never, you know, there's always some medicine everywhere around. So hopefully, that will not be the case and we'll see the kind of quick recovery. This is, you know, this is different than, you know, a recession because this has been essentially self-inflicted because of COVID. So there's the possibility at least that things could bounce back quickly. But I'm not an economist and I won't make any predictions, but it's certainly going to be, I would say, a challenging budget year, which I know is, it sort of describes every budget year, but especially appropriate this time. So there's a non-answer answer, Matt, sorry.
Great, thank you very much. No worries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mitchell?
I don't have any questions, but I was able to jump on the call today, the MMA call with the Lieutenant Governor, and I thought that was very informative. And Josh, thank you very much for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you, Kenny.
Mr. Hickey?
Hey, Josh. Just want to say thank you. We talked for a second before the meeting and I had asked Josh about the new numbers that would be coming out. And they, just to make sure I have it correct, Josh, that comes out every Wednesday?
Yeah, that's correct. So the state releases town-by-town specific data every Wednesday now. They've done it for two weeks in a row, so tomorrow we'll be scheduled to get the next iteration of that. Obviously, the towns, you know, health board gets through Maven, gets more detailed data that's not necessarily, you know, always released to the public, but that data through DPH will be updated, should be updated tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Boss?
Thanks, Josh, very much.
Okay, great. Thanks, Josh, and thanks for keeping us in the loop on all the many moving parts. And we hope to have you back in the next couple of weeks, maybe with Senator Brady, and see if you've got any more updates and perhaps a little bit more clarity on the financial outlook.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to come on anytime, folks. And I think you all have my email and cell phone. If you need anything, you know, at all, please, you know, don't hesitate. I know these are tough times and it's great to see the way our local towns and states are working together and it is, there are some positives to this and it's good to see all the cooperation and great work that's happening. So hopefully, that'll guide us through all this. So thank you.
Thank you. Take care, Josh.
All righty. Take care.
Okay. Moving on, quarterly fiscal update. Mr. Hassett, that would be item number two, I believe, I'm sorry, item number one in your packet?
Thank you. Good evening. You should have a four-page document in your packet, similar to what we've reviewed together in prior quarters. This is through the third quarter, March 31st. A lot more actual data now as far, as compared to estimates and projections. And so far, you know, we're still tracking pretty well with respect to the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the town. Our tax collections have continued to be strong. In terms of our local receipts, we've exceeded, in total, we've exceeded the budget estimate for the year, which is always our goal to reach to by the end of April. So we're actually tracking a little better than, you know, we would hope at this point. A couple of things just to point out, the, in the licenses and permits area, our building permit revenue is much stronger than it was a year ago at this time, although building activity we're seeing has slowed. That may be good news for another year out. I think we do have concerns about the slowness of construction currently and what that's going to equate to in terms of new growth, new tax revenue that would be available for the FY '21 budget. In terms of pilot payments, payments in lieu of taxes, you'll notice we have received quite a bit more than we estimated, and that's related to the sale of some one-time tax possessions, tax foreclosed properties. And the recurring revenue, if you will, in this area is closer to the budget. It's just under $10,000 a year. Our investment earnings have continued to be strong. Certainly, the rates are better than they were and the treasurer has a good, done a good job with cash management. Other revenue is favorable and that, in some measure, is the result of increased police activity in terms of fine, police fine and court fine revenue. That's about $9,000 over budget. So that's sort of in our revenue area where all, everything's looking good, no concerns for this fiscal year. Of course, next fiscal year is a whole nother conversation. With respect to the general fund expenditures, most everything is tracking where we would expect. I would point out to the board that one of the favorable things this year is the fact that we had a very mild winter. So when you look at the public works section of our budget, you notice it's, the percentage to date is unusually low for, as compared to other years. And that's largely related to the fact that we had a mild winter and we have, do not have a snow deficit as we usually do at this point. And so we won't need to sort out how to cover that deficit this year. So that's a sort of atypical piece of good news for us. With respect to education, you'll see we're tracking a little more favorably percentage-wise than a year ago. That relates specifically to capital projects that the town has authorized for the schools that are underway, many of which are underway at the schools, but they've not sought any reimbursement from the town at this point. So that will likely change in the next month or two. Human services is tracking higher than a year ago, but that is simply because a year ago, last year, we had a long-term vacancy in the, in the health department and the health agent's position. With respect to employee benefits and insurance, we're at nearly 90%. And that's reflecting 10 months of payments. We are, we do fully pay for our pension obligation at the beginning of the year and our group insurance, we usually pay at the end of the month for the following month. So the group health is paid about a month ahead in terms of this report. Debt service, we've made all of our debt payments scheduled for the year and don't anticipate any more expense in that area. So all in all, the general fund is tracking well and revenue is solid. Not really any area that I would point out to the board of concern at this time. Moving along to the water fund, the next page in your exhibits, you'll notice the water fund revenue is about 600,000, the actual is about 600,000 under budget at this point, tracking a little behind where we were a year ago. I would just remind the board that the, the second major billing for water has not gone out to residents yet, to ratepayers. That's scheduled to be mailed next week. And I believe the estimate for that billing is just under 775,000 that will be going out next year. So the water department and those bills will be due in early June. So assuming favorable collections, they should, should meet or exceed the budget for the year, though I don't anticipate a lot of recharge to their surplus as compared to recent years. And as we've discussed prior times when we've been together, looking ahead for FY '21 with the water department, a lot of their debt will be coming on as we did bond sales back in the fall, as you know. So the water commission is undergoing a rate study at this time and ratepayers will likely see a rate increase for the next fiscal cycle. In terms of, oh, and I just one other point, point out one other thing with respect to the water report, their indirect costs were underestimated and we do have, we will be making provision for a transfer to cover the shortfall they have in that area. They are tracking well in their operating expenses and we may just agree to just do a simple transfer from operating expense to indirects to, to cover that shortfall or they do have adequate surplus. So there's no concern of any sort of subsidy from the general fund for water. Moving along to the third page, the recreation enterprise or the operation at Camp Kiwani is, as you know, like some of our other services, closed at, or relatively closed at the moment. So we don't anticipate much additional revenue for the balance of this year. So we do, we do expect that's going to run a little short, but correspondingly, their expenses and some of their wages as well are, have slowed. So I don't anticipate, unlike a year ago at this time, where we needed to ask the town to subsidize this program about 75,000. I do anticipate they're going to come in under budget on revenue, but also under budget on their overall operating expenses and have no need for a subsidy to get through this year. Certainly, again, as we look ahead to the next fiscal year, with what's been going on, you know, there's certainly summer, all of their summer program is at risk and, you know, what we need to do in terms of estimating revenues and proper adjusting their operating expenses, we'll be working on as we get closer to town meeting. So that's, that's an area of concern. We do have a, as you know, even as early as January, when we first reported the budget, the '21 budget to the board, we were anticipating some level of subsidy for this program. So that will, will continue to play out over the next few months and we'll be ready for town meeting. Lastly, the solid waste enterprise, the last page in your exhibits, or the operation at the transfer station in our solid waste program, that seems to be tracking fairly well. Revenues are, are good. We're likely going to meet our revenue targets for the year, although, as you know, we had to use quite a bit of retained earnings in order to balance this year's budget. So even though revenues are meeting the budgeted revenues, they're not certainly at a level that cover the total operating costs for this program. And as you know, a couple of months ago, we had to enter into a new agreement for disposal, some of the disposal costs, and we've had, seen some cost increases for this program. And the actual expense you're looking at tends to run a month or two behind in terms of the way we're billed for collection and disposal. So even though it appears favorable, we do anticipate in the expense area, the need for some level of transfer to balance out and get through the year. And we're still working on that. I think we have a placeholder in the neighborhood of 35,000 in our working documents, but this is still a little unclear as we're just starting to get monthly billings at the new tonnage rates. So that's really the only area that, that we have a bit of concern to get through the balance of this year would be the transfer station. All of the other operations look like they're tracking fairly well. And as I say, water not quite as well as, as other years, but they're going to be fine. And the general fund is solid. Of course, of course, next year is, as I say, a little more challenging as we look forward. But to date, I'm pleased to report to the board that, that this year is shaping up to be okay from a fiscal standpoint. And with that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments the board might have.
Okay, great. I'll just go down the line and see what questions or comments people may have. Todd, thank you. Mr. Dyer?
Hi, Todd. Thanks for all your hard work. My question for you would be, over the last year or so, we've had solid waste and recreation kind of being a concern of constantly infusing cash to stimulate these programs. Have you been working with both departments to kind of limit how much we have to support them on an annual basis at town meeting or how has that conversation been going?
Yes, both, both John and I have been working with recreation and the board of health. Certainly, the changes in the solid waste costs, you know, have increased the need for a subsidy or support for the programs. They, they both are at a point where it may be worth revisiting the concept that the finance committee had brought forward last year and considering one or both of these operations to sort of rescind the enterprise concept and fold them into the overall town operating budget. Certainly, with respect to recreation, that, that would still allow us to run some sort of a off-budget revolving fund to support program activities. So there'd still be some flexibility if, if they're able to run a lot of programs or a few programs where the revenue from those programs could support the related costs. But I think, you know, based on our current models, both operations will continue to need some level of support, although I think recreation has leveled out and solid waste has become more of a concern in terms of the need for general fund assistance.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Mr. Mitchell?
I have two questions, Todd. The first one, what is investment income under the revenue expenditures?
So at any point in time, Mr. Mitchell, the town has cash in its various funds from either tax collections or grant revenue or fee-based programs. And so this represents the cash man, part of the cash management activity that, that the treasurer initiates through investing available cash in legally authorized. We're really limited in Massachusetts and communities as to what we can, you know, we can't invest. we can't invest general, uh, cash, for example, in stocks or bonds. Um, but, uh, it has to be much more conservatively invested. But this is, a lot of it's, it's primarily interest earnings, um, that vary, from various institutions for, for, um, various types of investments that the treasurer makes. And now with the rates being better than they were a few years ago, we're starting to see, you know, improved actual numbers in this area.
Okay, great. And the second question is, in respect to the water department, I think I asked this question last January, but, um, is there any talks about going to the quarterly billing for the water department? So we can kind of get that revenue back in like we did with the taxes three, four years ago?
Uh, yes, thank you. A good question. And, and you're right, we did, we have touched upon this a few times over the last year. Um, yeah, in talking with the water superintendent, uh, with the new meter program, the new meters that have been installed throughout the community and this new program and their ability to read meters has become a lot easier, as you know, and more automated. So, um, not only are they looking at a rate increase, but they also are considering moving to a quarterly billing system as well. Um, I haven't seen anything definitive, but, um, the superintendent has assured me that, that they're aware of it and working toward that end.
Okay, excellent. And thank you for all your efforts Todd, and I hope you never retire.
Thank you so much.
Oh boy, okay. Uh, Mr. Hickey.
Hey Todd, it's Jim. Um, I just wanted to say thanks for the, for the work on this, but what I really want to thank you for is bringing up the cove. I think that, uh, this board and the board of health, um, within the next, uh, month to six weeks are going to have to take a serious look, um, at what we're going to have to do, uh, for the summer. Um, not that it needs to be brought up now, but that, how would that affect, um, the budget if to say it, it didn't open?
So if it, if it didn't open, um, what we'd, we'd want to do at town meeting is ask for a reduced, uh, we would reduce certain salary wage, excuse me, wage and expense lines that support the, the summer cove program. And we do have a corresponding revenue estimate that's pretty close to, um, you know, it sort of matches the, the cost for the cove. So it, the cove itself is sort of a sub-entity of recreation is, is pretty close to self-supporting. So what we would likely do in that scenario is we'd reduce the budget and therefore reduce the estimated revenue from the cove just for, for this one year, you know, assuming we'd, we'd fold it back in a year from now. Um, but abstinent doing that, um, if we, if we were to vote the budget at a higher amount and, and then we closed, for example, for part or all of the summer, um, when we, when the town goes, approaches the department of revenue to have our tax rate set in the fall, they would likely, um, hold up our rate and, and possibly ask us to, um, revote a, uh, more realistic budget for, for this year for the program. And, and, uh, and very often, as you know, when we have our October town meeting, we do, um, amend certain, um, budgets or operations. And, and that would certainly be a fallback for us in the event, um, we had a town meeting and didn't know about something and needed to adjust in order to get our tax rate approved. I hope that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Yeah, that's, um, that's a great point, Jim. And I, I don't know when we'll have to look at it. I guess we'll reach out to the board of health and, uh, obviously based on Governor Baker's orders of May 18th and then the transition. And I'm sure they'll have recommendations on beaches and all that other stuff, but I don't know how that's all going to interplay with the timing for town meeting. So we may end up having to take the approach that Todd just outlined. Um, okay, well, more to come on that, I guess. Uh, Mr. Boss?
Todd, no thanks. I think you've answered everything that I've got at this point. At least this year is closing on a good note. Next year, we wait and see. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. My pleasure.
All right. Thank you so much, uh, Todd, and thank you for all the work that I know you're doing behind the scenes with, um, John on, uh, as we try to figure out what we're going to do with the school budget and the school assessment issue. I know you've been putting in a lot of hours on that too, so thank you.
Sure, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Um, with that, we will move on to review the warrant articles. And Mr. Stambrook, I don't know quite how you want to queue this up. Everybody's got, um, the, the list in their packet, um, of the, uh, the articles. And, um, I don't know if you, was it your intention to kind of go through them or just, uh, how did you want to introduce that subject?
Well, I just, uh, thank you. I just wanted to show everyone that, you know, what I had as of today. I don't know if you want me to read through them all. Um, there are 12 special town meeting articles on the list and 31 annual town meeting articles as of now. Um, uh, everyone has the list. I, i- if you want me to read them one by one, I can read them or we can go to ones that people have questions on. I, I guess it's whatever you'd like to do.
I think, um, it sounds a bit like watching paint dry to have you, um, read each one of them. But, um, you know, are there any in particular that you think, you know, wouldn't, would not, you know, would not be, uh, self-explanatory that you might need to, to tell us about or?
Uh, well, there are still some, um, towards the end, the non-monetary ones that are still in development, um, on the annual ones. Um, right after this on the, on, on the, uh, agenda is a, you know, first draft of the special town meeting where I actually have the wording for the, on the articles. Of course, it can change. And, um, I guess the, uh, it just, I wanted to make sure everyone understood the timeline that we're under with the June 15th town meeting. Um, so we have this meeting and then next meeting is when we close the warrant to other, to any more, um, any more articles. And then we have a 19th meeting. And then May 23rd would be the last day to get a proposition two and a half override question to the town clerk. Um, so that would be the May 19th meeting you'd probably, because I think the 23rd is a Saturday, I think. Um, and then the 26th would be when you actually signed the warrants to be posted. So, uh, we're not up against the, you know, given the June 15th town meeting date, if that's where we are, we're not up against it. This is kind of just a, a first glance of where, you know, what's going on and what's happening. Um, probably in the, uh, pre-COVID-19 days, we, this is probably where we would be in late March, maybe first week in April, we'd be talking about this. I think we may have actually started it back then, which seems like a lifetime ago. Um, so I, I guess, I guess the, the, the elephant in the room question would be, um, a number six on the annual town meeting. Um, that would be the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Assessment. Um, right now, that's the placeholder I have in there for a, uh, an override question. And I know that's a, another item on the agenda later on. Um, and that obviously needs, was one that would have to be, be talked about. Um, but, I mean, I, I just want to make sure, I guess this first passes, uh, it, you know, I want to make sure I have everyone's, uh, we had a, a list of things that we wanted to go with, or you did, and I want to make sure I got them all. I didn't leave anything out. Uh, and just, I, I did take out the, um, the highway, uh, the, the new highway garage, uh, because we had talked about taking that off the last time we, I think we met in person. Um, so I just want to make sure that there isn't an article where someone is saying, um, I told you in February that I wanted that on there and I missed it somehow. Um, since we can't meet, uh, any other way, we, this is the way that we could kind of hash that out. That makes sense.
Okay. Uh, yeah, it does make a lot of sense. So I'll just go down the line and see if anybody had anything that you didn't capture. Mr. Dyer?
Nope, uh, looks, uh, great, John. And thank you to you and Greer for putting this together.
Okay, great. And Mr. Mitchell?
Nope, I agree with Matt. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
All set, thanks.
Okay, and Mr. Boss?
Um, no, I'm good, but can I just ask John, so for example, uh, the special town meeting, number 11, repaid parking lot 228 High Street. I take that that's for the food bank, not necessarily for the Plymouth County Hospital renovations?
Yeah, so that's the, that's the parking lot to, I guess if you're looking at the building from the street, I was up with the, uh, the highway director last Thursday, um, looking at it myself. So if you're, you're standing on High Street, you're looking at the building, it's to the left of the building where the food pantry door is, that area right there.
Right, it's just, yes. No, go ahead, John.
Um, it would be to repave that area there.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, and I'm just curious, uh, regular time meeting 27 revise or clarify on appointing authority issues. I've not, I forget, what is the issue there? Do we know?
I think this was the one where we, yeah, go ahead, John.
I, I was just going to say that, um, I, I'm working with town council on clarifying the, uh, the Town Administrator Act over appointing issues of certain members of, uh, of, of, people that work for the town. Um, it was one of the ones that was, uh, was talked about a while ago and I, I added it back on there. I don't have exact wording for it yet because I'm still working with, uh, with Kate, um, on that, Kate Federoff.
I think if you guys will recall, this harkens back, there may be other positions, but I think this harkens back to, um, the Recreation Commission, um, questioning whether Mary should be the appointing authority when she was our interim town administrator for the Recreation Director position. And there was one other position that came up that Kate just said, you know what, I think you guys should just clarify the Town Administrator Act and just batten down the hatches on that.
Okay, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I, so it sounds to me, Mr. Stambrook, I had no other additions. It sounds to me like everybody feels as though you've included the things that they were concerned about and that, um, you know, obviously we'll get more detail as the articles are written and all, but, uh, that's so far so good. And, um, this was a lot of work and we appreciate you and Greer, um, putting it all together. Um, is there anything else you wanted to say before we move on to the special town meeting warrant?
No, I just wanted to say thank you very much. And Greer's been doing a great job, um, and I appreciate her hard work too.
Okay. Um, and so in, in terms of the special town meeting, you fleshed out a bit more detail on that. Was there anything there that you wanted to point out?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure that the board saw that, you know, in general, again, some of the numbers, uh, I, are, are in flux. Uh, I, I met with Mr. Hassett earlier today, uh, about some new numbers that have come in. So they're not set in stone yet. Um, again, my, what I usually am used to doing is not being very specific with the warrant that gets posted, just in case something changes. So for example, if you don't want to say, uh, um, I, I, in general, in the warrant that gets posted, I wouldn't say something like, uh, to see if the town will, will, um, authorize the spending of $30,000 to do an, at, you know, uh, deed number X, letter X. I would, I would say, you know, to see if the town will vote to, uh, expend a sum of money. Because if it goes to 31,000 or 29 or some other number, um, you know, it can get confusing in town meeting, uh, town meeting floor. So, um, I have included some of the numbers in here, uh, but, uh, as soon as I did that, of course, some of the numbers changed. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, this is my, I'm thinking that I would like to go with a more vague, a sum of money, just in case there is some sort of change from, and I just, I don't know how it works here in, 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 uh, in town, whether or not, um, you're used to seeing a hard number in the posted warrant as opposed to the motion.
It does typically, um, it is typically in the, um, hard coded warrant, but we've had times when, uh, there might be, um, you know, an insert, um, with some of those numbers. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think the thought process is obviously we want people to be as well-informed as possible. So to the extent they don't have a dollar amount, and I'm looking at the warrant online, trying to figure out, you know, is, is this kind of worth my time to go to town meeting? And do I really care? Um, how are you going to know that if you don't really have a number? Uh, that, so that's historically how we've done it. But, I mean, if there are things that you think that maybe are, you know, that you are fairly confident about the numbers, then maybe you could put those in. And to the extent that you've got something that's not quite as nailed down, you might be able to do a supplement. I talked to Beth about it, um, and I'm sure she can walk you through her, her preferred, preferred mode and the way that we've been doing it historically.
Okay, that's great. I will do that. And thank you for, uh, for indulging me, my rookie, my rookie, uh, growing pains.
Oh, not at all. It's our pleasure. Um, so, um, did anybody have any questions? Mr. Dyer, any questions on this?
Nope, none of us done. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
All set, thank you.
Mr. Hickey?
I'm all set too.
Mr. Boss?
I'm all set too. Thanks, John.
Okay, fabulous. Um, now, John, the next item we've got up here, um, does cause one's heart to race a bit. Um, discussion of an override question. Um, this isn't to suggest that we are at a point where we are willing to do an override. Um, because as we know, the ball is very much still in play. Um, a budget has not been voted on, uh, no agreement has been reached in terms, or, you know, we don't know what our portion of the school budget would be and all that. So did you kind of want to lay up what your thought process was? Is this sort of a placeholder in the event that we may end up in that place?
Yes, that's exactly it. Um, the, again, I, um, it, it was simply just a placeholder to say, uh, we, and we have, we have three, this meeting and then two other meetings to talk about it, if that were to go that, that route. Um, but I just have a, an article, again, it was, uh, in the packet that you have, it's numbered Article Six. And, um, and I took that, the, the wording of the article from, um, the previous time there was an override in town. So, um, if that's just, it, uh, it's just a placeholder to talk about, um, with, with no budget in place and no idea what number, uh, what assessment number might come our way. It, it, I just thought it would be, um, prudent to at least talk about it, but it is not, uh, you know, forced upon us or, or a, a reality yet.
Okay, so maybe, um, uh, it sounds to me like you just kind of want to keep it as a placeholder for the next couple of meetings in case we have to act on that. Is that kind of where you're going on that?
Yes, I'd like to have it on there so that if, um, you know, I, I don't know what might happen, but if, if something happens and we, we take it off, then we might, I'd like to keep our options open if that is what the board would want to do.
Okay, all right, that sounds great. Uh, did anybody have any comments or questions on that? Okay. Um, John, um, next up on the agenda is once again you, um, Small Business Relief Partnership Grant, Attorney General's Office. Can you queue that up for us?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Representative Cutler, uh, reached out, um, it might've been a week or two ago now, um, that the Attorney General's Office had, uh, had money available for a grant for, uh, to, for some small business relief. They're calling it the, the Small Business Relief Program. Uh, each town is avail, is, is able to ask for up to $50,000, um, to help out small businesses. They, we had to come up with a program in order to do that. Um, I was able, I, with, uh, with the chairs and, and, uh, Mr. Cutler's help, I was able to come up with, uh, a program that I thought would work. Um, and I, uh, applied for the grant. Um, and just quickly as, uh, as a, an overview of the program. It hasn't been, um, it's, I've put it into the Attorney General's Office, but it hasn't been, uh, approved yet, but it is out there. So, um, just as an overview, the, the program would fund small businesses, um, a certain amount to, uh, up to $2,500 to pay local taxes or bills due to the town, like real estate, personal property bills, water bills, or to pay utility bills, uh, rents or mortgage payments. Um, and, you know, a small business would be defined as, um, a, a sole proprietorship, partnership, or corporation chartered in the Commonwealth that employs less than 25 people. The small business would have to show us their, uh, Department of Unemployment Assistance Quarterly reports showing that they, in do, uh, um, employ less than 25 people in the, on the, in the last quarter. Um, we would have a, uh, a committee set up of myself, the treasurer collector, the town clerk, and the town assessor appraiser to review the applications on a rolling basis. review the applications on a rolling basis, determine any eligibility, and, um, and disperse the grant funds according to the, the, what the Attorney General's Grant, uh, funds is, is, you know, according to their rules, really, um, there wouldn't be any money going, uh, any cash at all going to any, uh, applicant whatsoever, if it was a town bill that was going to be paid, we would just simply, uh, have, uh, Mr. Hassett, if he's still on, or work with the treasure collector in order to take the money from the grant funds and put that into, uh, you know, pay the bill on our end, um, in the, you know, either real estate, personal property, or water, whatever the case may be, if it was the applicant's utility rent or mortgage payment to someone else, we would directly pay that, uh, there would be no cash dispersment to the applicant. Um, so, uh, the Attorney General is, uh, got back to, uh, got back to me and said it had been received, and they were going to review it, and again, Representative Cutler was, um, was very, uh, very helpful in writing a letter of support on behalf of the town, um, for this grant, and, uh, he sent a letter in with it to, uh, kind of, kind of speed the plow with Attorney General Mara Healy, so, I'd like to say, say thank you to Representative Cutler, and, um, let's see what happens, there's, there's no guarantee, but we may, at least it's been accepted as, um, given to them, and there may be, uh, something good coming out.
Okay, great, uh, Mr. Dyer, anything on that?
Nope, thank you very much.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nope, thank you, I think that sounds like it's a great program for small businesses.
Yeah, Mr. Hickey?
Um, no, hopefully it'll work out, uh, just, you know, thanks to Josh and John for, for getting it done, and hopefully it'll get an answer very soon.
And Mr. Boss?
Yep, thanks for being on, John and Josh spoke in here.
All right, great, uh, good work on that, um, and I don't think we have any requests or appointments or resignations unless something came in since the agenda was written up, uh, in terms of old business, discuss adding, uh, preface to twenty-nineteen town report, John?
Uh, yes, thank you, so I, I distributed out to everybody what I came up with as a draft of what to put in the annual town report, um, I can read it if you like, or I can just ask, take questions, whatever you'd like to do.
Um, I, well, I guess, um, I'm assuming everybody had time to read it, it's a couple of paragraphs, we totally appreciate you putting that together, uh, maybe I'll just kind of go down the line and see if anybody had any questions or comments or concerns, is that okay? Um, Mr. Dyer?
Looks great, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Looks excellent, thank you.
Mr. Hickey?
Nope, I'm good, thanks, John.
And Mr. Boss?
John, I'm glad you got our number so quickly, thank you.
Okay, great, um, so, John, I don't, did you want a formal vote, I mean, it sounds like everybody's, you know, feeling good about this, and you can just go ahead and, and, um, you know, and insert it into the, um, town report, so I think you're good to go.
Yeah, I don't think I require a, a formal vote, but thank you very much for, uh, for, um, being on board with it.
Well, thank you for putting it together, we really appreciate it, especially given everything else that you've got going on. Uh, next up on the agenda, extend town administrators' authorization to sign warrants, um, before the meeting, I had a little conversation with John, and I said, did you have a particular date in mind, as you guys know, since we've been in this COVID-nineteen quarantine situation, John's been signing the warrants and has done an excellent job of keeping us updated on what he is signing and the amounts and all of that, uh, you know, really keeping us in the loop. Given the Governor, uh, Governor Baker's extension till May eighteenth on the shutdown, we thought it might make sense to take a vote to extend John's signatory abilities until May nineteenth, um, so, um, unless anybody had any objection to that, I'd, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, Kenny.
Second, Jim.
Okay, and then, um, we'll go to roll call vote, Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Boss?
Aye.
And, Ms. Kemet?
Aye.
Okay, great, uh, and, John, that brings us to regional school assessment matter, um, I'll just say a couple of, um, words about that, and then I'm not sure if you had anything you wanted to chime in on, uh, Matt and I, as the representatives from the, uh, select, Board of Selectmen, uh, Hanson Board of Selectmen, have been attending the regional agreement, um, meetings, and part of that discussion has been around the regional assessment and figuring out a path forward in terms of, you know, what, will we get assessed, um, you know, how, what method of assessment and all of that, um, we had a very productive meeting last week where the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools joined that meeting and, um, brought everybody up to speed on the history of education reform, on the move to statutory and all the stuff that everybody on this call is already quite well aware of, um, and, uh, so that was very productive, we're meeting this coming Thursday at seven PM, again, uh, and, uh, in an attempt to try to keep the pressure on so that we can get some closure on this regional agreement, uh, at the last meeting, all of the members were asked to provide items that they wanted to have the group consider having in the agreement, um, and the, so the collective comments from each town were given to, um, Michelle Lindberg, uh, Superintendent Secretary, and we asked to have a rolling five-year average for student count, uh, review of the agreement every five years, membership to be tied to the percent of the budget that's paid, um, it, we, a, uh, an ability to have a, um, intermediary, uh, mediation, uh, in the event that one town wanted to leave the district and the other, uh, town was not permitting them to do that, and then, um, a fifty-fifty split of the difference between statutory and per pupil method to be, um, to be implemented, so, uh, those were all submitted, and I guess we'll see what sticks and what doesn't when we meet on Thursday, um, there's still some questions that were given to the, um, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools to, um, answer, uh, Mr. Young had some outstanding questions that have yet to be answered, uh, but I know he's been following up on those diligently, and I hope that we'll get some responses on that. Um, while we're talking about the regional assessment matter, I've had a couple of people reach out, um, to me and ask, when are we going to be, uh, forming a deregionalization feasibility study committee, and it was my recollection that we had all decided as a committee, and I actually have, I have to look back to see if you actually even included this, John, on, on the warrant, now that I'm saying it, um, to have, uh, the voters decide if they wanted us to put together a deregionalization, uh, committee, because I think we kind of knew financially, it probably wouldn't be in our best interest, uh, at least initially, um, we'd lose all kinds of hold timeless money and regional busing money and all kinds of other things, um, and also, we knew that it's gonna be a two to three conservatively year process to deregionalize, even if we're just talking about K through eight, so I think the last time that we discussed it, which was probably over the summer, we had talked about, let's just put a warrant article on the town meeting warrant, because we may end up needing to hire somebody to run numbers and walk us through what that process looks like, and it wouldn't be a ton of money, probably, I think at the time, John had thought it would be less than ten thousand or something, I don't, I, I don't even recall the exact dollar amount, but I, I just wanna kind of make sure that, that you guys are still, still there, that we're still thinking that this isn't something we need to form right away, it doesn't necessarily, you know, rise to the top of the list of things that we're working on, not that we're not going to look at it, but that, you know, in the context of the immediate budget, and in the context of the fact that we've got the regional agreement discussions that are happening, and that we know that it's gonna take two to three years to deregionalize, even if we get this committee together, that it just isn't rising to the top of that pile, so, I know that was a lot to unpack, um, I'll just go down and, and if you could just say, yeah, I'm on board with not prioritizing this, or whatever your thoughts are, um, you know, uh, let me know, Mr. Dyer?
I think right now, we can put this on the back burner, I don't think, uh, forming a committee would be productive in our talks with regional assessment at this time, um, as you said, this is a long process, I think we could revisit it, maybe, uh, for the October town meeting, if needed.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Item number three on the school committee's agenda tomorrow on the old business is discussion to rescind the statutory assessment methodology for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, so I think we should hold off and be hopeful that that vote goes through to rescind the, tomorrow night.
I like your thought process, thank you, Mr. Hickey?
Um, yeah, I'll just say no comment right now, I think that is best for me to say.
Okay, we appreciate that, Mr. Hickey, uh, Mr. Boss?
Now, Wes is in agreement with you, let's, let's not rush into this.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we're, we're kind, yeah, it sounds like, no, go ahead.
If, if you want me to go further into it, I really do agree with Matt, but I also wanna make sure that we're, we're ready, um, in case Kenny's point on agenda item number three tomorrow night, um, doesn't work out.
Yep, um, I think, um, you know, I don't know if Kenny's point on agenda item number three is gonna work out or not, um, it's hard to say, you know, um, but, um, whether it does or not, uh, Matt and I are still working with the regional agreement committee, um, on a regional agreement, and I think Mr. Dyer did a, quite a lovely job of summarizing that, you know, um, certainly, forming a deregionalization committee in the middle of while we're trying to have diplomatic talks is probably not gonna send the right message, um, and, and again, i- it isn't that, you know, we might not wanna look into this, or that we, you know, don't think that we should look into it, but I think just the timing, it's, you know, right, there's a time and place for everything, and now just might not be the time, and it sounds like you guys are all kind of in agreement on that, and we'll see what happens and hope for the best at the school committee meeting and at the regional agreement committee, and, um, and we can always circle the wagons and talk about it again, um, but I just wanted to bring that up, cause, um, I, I had had a couple people reach out to me on it. Okay, with that, Mr. Stanbrook, um, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, um, okay, since the last, uh, last meeting, I have signed the following warrants on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, dated four sixteen twenty twenty, warrant number forty-two for two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents, and that was a vendor warrant, and the major invoices on that vendor warrant was a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-seven dollars and fifty cents of water debt, principal and interest, um, and I signed another warrant dated four sixteen twenty twenty, warrant forty-two PR for one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents, and that was a payroll warrant, and I also signed another warrant dated four sixteen twenty twenty, uh, warrant number forty-two WH for twenty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and one cent, and that was the payroll withholding warrant, again, funds that are withheld from, uh, employees' wages, um, so, and then some new business, uh, the, again, well, actually, it's old business, we talked about it last week, um, the Hanson Town Admin, Administrator Special Act requires me to give the, the board an update on all, all outstanding legal matters monthly, I have repaired, I prepared the report, um, but the sensitivity of some of the things that may be in the, in, on the legal matters, um, I'd like to just give you the, uh, each one of you the report, myself, and since we, since we can't do that, I, uh, for now, anyway, um, I was going to send it, uh, via the mail to you, um, and then when we can meet again, I'll, I'll send that to you, um, I'll give the report to you every month, um, but I'd really like to hand deliver it, because there are things in there that are related to personnel, to union bargaining, maybe some health-related issues or something, things like that, that can't be discussed in public session and, um, may, um, you know, sensitive in nature, so I have prepared the report, I have complied with the special acts requirements, and I will do that every month. Um, moving on to, uh, the, the, the town has contracted with the firm KMA to assist us with doing a town-wide assessment of our American with Disabilities Act compliance, um, KMA is being paid via a state grant to conduct a public survey on the ADA, the American with Disabilities Act access in the town, so the public's input on this is really, is needed, um, so you can please go to the town's website, which is www.hanson-dash-ma.gov, and look for the heading ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, Public Survey, due May eighth, I know that's kind of a long one, but just look for anything in ADA that's on the, right on the homepage, it'll, it'll be easily found, please fill out the survey, send it back as soon as possible, you can send, it's a Survey Monkey thing for, uh, people that are tech savvy, you can send it right back right then, if you'd like to print it out, fill it out, and mail it back to them, you can do that too, um, but please, we need to have this survey done so that we can improve our, or know, know where we need to work on our ADA Act compliance, and your cooperation with that is greatly appreciated by me and everyone, um, the, uh, just, so, it, last Thursday, or since we last met, um, the Board of Health has, um, uh, declared that, that everyone in the town, or some of the people in town should have, uh, face coverings while out in public, um, again, that's on the town's website, www.hanson slash ma.gov, um, I, I, also, I, maybe perhaps we should put it on the sign out front, or, um, something like, like that, I, I mean, I could go over the, the, uh, the main points of it, but, uh, it, you know, very quickly, but again, the more information is, is on the website, uh, you have, any, any, all members of the public ages two years of old, two years of age or older entering any essential business, uh, with, and essential businesses, what the governor has been talking about, uh, essential businesses, uh, for the last six weeks now or so, whatever, how long that's been, um, uh, has to have a face covering, uh, oh, um, whi, when they do enter in, into the building, so, uh, some sort of cloth face covering, fabric mask, scarf, bandana, uh, to cover their nose and mouth, um, and, uh, all employees of all essential businesses should have to wear the face covering over their mouth when interacting with the public and within six feet of any coworker, um, and there's more, more on there, uh, on there, but those are the, the, um, you know, the overall view of what's happening there, so, um, I just wanted to get that out to everyone, maybe, uh, people may not have known that, um, and it's a, it's a big thing, so, um, that, that came from the Board of Health, um, just an update on, uh, town working, workers working from home, um, so I have a report from each department head on what their workers have been doing and their department heads, uh, department heads have been, um, been talking to the, the workers, um, I, I can go through them, but, but in, in general, uh, they, the department has been in touch with workers that have been working from home, um, workers do have, the, the people that have been working from home do have access to any emails or voicemails, um, that they, that, um, that, that people may leave for them, um, not a lot have access to the accounting system to pay the bills, so, um, you know, they, sometimes people have to do come in, and if there are bills that have to get paid, um, again, it's, it, a, a lot of our work here at Town Hall, anyway, revolves around meetings and public outreach, and of course, they've been minimized, um, the town doesn't have video conference capability right now, and it has an aging telecom infrastructure, um, again, we have a fiber network project that's in, in the works, and our IT Director, Ryan McGonigal, has been doing a great job with that, that should alleviate some of the problems that we're having, um, just for example, Town Hall phone lines, uh, were out for most of last week, again, that was a Verizon problem, uh, on the pole, that, we couldn't do anything about that, so if, if you had called last week, uh, if you have called us and, um, you've, no one answered, that, our phone lines were out, uh, I apologize for that, again, there's, there's nothing we can do about it until Verizon fixes the problem, um, so, uh, again, police, fire, highway, water, transfer station workers, and a skeleton crew of Town Hall workers and other workers have been showing up, you know, every day and, uh, keeping the town functioning, um, so just a quick update on the plans for when we're, when we do reopen to the public, um, we've been taking every building one by one and just trying to figure out what, what we need to do in order to keep the, uh, keep, keep the guidelines in place while still serving the public as best as we can. in order to keep the, uh, keep, keep the guidelines in place while still serving the public as best as we can. Um, so with the Town Hall, we've, uh, I've been working with the Police Chief and the Building Inspector and the Town Hall Custodian, um, to, uh, on how to open the building safely. Um, and we're gonna go around and do this with each town building individually. Uh, again, with, with, starting with the Town Hall, uh, you know, we're, we're talking about ideas like putting up plexiglass guards, uh, um, you know, having, uh, proper distancing of the public, uh, you know, traffic flow within the building, maybe a one-way traffic flow, like you've seen in supermarkets, uh, um, try to stop any type of, uh, within six feet, um, congregation of people. Um, rotating workers so that we don't violate the social distancing guidelines of employees. Um, uh, our, some of our offices are small, and, uh, it would be difficult to be fully staffed and still keep those guidelines in place. Um, of course, sanitizing frequently, everyone wearing masks and gloves. We're trying to get as many masks and gloves as we possibly can from any source possible, um, for when the day comes when we do open up. And, uh, just, again, no lawyer, we, we're not gonna be having, allowing any lawyering or socializing in the building. Um, you know, business only until these restrictions are, uh, are lifted. I know, um, I know that sounds harsh, but, but, you know, for the time being, when, when we do open, we're gonna have to enforce these things. It's, you kinda come in, uh, do your business, um, and, and exit this, so that we don't have any type of, uh, social distancing problems. Uh, is, some, uh, other ideas that are out there that, that are, are by appointment only or, um, perhaps keeping the door locked and then having someone come down and have, have a buzzers, maybe, and have them come in and one at a time. Uh, again, we, it's, it's fluid, we still have a couple of weeks, but we'll have our plans in place, and we'll go around every building and do that. Um, we're, you know, we're thinking it out, we're trying to figure out how we can do it. We wanna serve the public, and, um, and that's, that's what, um, what we're doing as far as, you know, whenever the day is, and I hope it's soon, as just like everyone does, but we're not gonna open up and have, and be put, put, put any employees or any members of the public at risk. Um, uh, moving on again to, uh, another issue of the fiscal year 21 budget. Uh, I have been working with Mr. Hassett on, on, uh, where we are on that. And, uh, for now, the general fund deficit is around $1.6 million. Uh, again, that is a, uh, most of that deficit is from the Regional School District Assessment. Uh, that deficit has the full amount, uh, that, um, the Regional School District, um, said would be Hanson's assessment before they, they rescinded the vote. Um, so I, I've been using that number in there, and so has Mr. Hassett. Um, there, there has been some discussion about, uh, Special Education Stabilization Funds, uh, setting them up, perhaps using that as a way to try to fund some issues. I think I talked about it a lot, I don't, either one or two meetings ago, um, as an idea of, and, so Special Education Stabilization Fund would be, uh, this is how it would work in theory. Uh, the Town Meeting would vote to set it up. Um, the Town Meeting majority would vote to put any money to go into it. Um, Town Meeting two-thirds vote would be needed to take any money out of it, and it would be used for unanticipated, unanticipated Hanson Special Education costs. And any interest that the money that we put into it that, uh, would generate, uh, would stay with the fund. So, it doesn't go to the general fund, uh, in that interest income line that, that, um, that we, we were talking about earlier. It would, it would stay with the, the, uh, stabilization fund. So, it's similar to the town's General Stabilization Fund and Capital Stabilization Fund for, for the school. Um, and just so, you know, I, I do have some budget documents, um, that, that I'm gonna be rolling out. I'm gonna be sending them out for a discussion as I do it. Uh, they may be new, or, um, you, I don't know if you've seen things like, that, what I'm gonna send to you. So, um, perhaps we can, could talk about that at the next meeting, or I think, uh, we'll, can talk about that later. Uh, maybe later on as we get further on to, towards, uh, Town Meeting. Um, uh, one thing that did come up that, it just came up this afternoon, and we'll probably need to, because it wasn't on the agenda, we'll probably have to discuss it lo, um, uh, next week is, uh, the Veterans Agent is, uh, talking about, uh, what to do for, uh, what we could possibly do for Memorial Day, the Memorial Day Parade. A lot of towns are canceling the parade. Uh, he had some ideas of what we could do here. Um, again, it just came up this afternoon, um, but we can discuss it at length next week. I'd like, if, with the Chair's permission, I'd like to put that on for next week's, uh, agenda. Uh, I could send along what the Veterans Agent has to say, and perhaps he could even call in if you have any questions for him.
Oh, yeah, that would be great, John, because I know a lot of people have been asking about it. You know, uh, he always does such a superb job of putting together a Memorial Day celebration, but of course, we don't, we don't wanna unduly expose the very people that we're saying that we love and are honoring. So, um, yeah, it, it, um, Greer, if we could just put a placeholder on the next agenda to have, um, if Tim's available, to have him come and speak to us.
I will ask him to.
And, and, uh, just to, as a, as a, as a, as a closing, I guess, with, with, um, the Governor's Order being extended today, uh, out to May 18th, um, I would think that when we get to that point in the agenda of things not known 48 hours before the meeting, um, obviously, that was, it wasn't known that the Governor was going to extend that. We should probably at least talk about, um, should the town also extend it to the 18th? Because right now, it's set to expire on May 4th, I think, yes, it's, it's May 4th.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, yes, I think we should take, we should take a vote, John, on that, too. Um, and so I assume what you're saying is to continue with the restrictions that we've got in place for Town Hall, um, you know, access, for the public to access Town Hall, um, you know, physically. Um, we're obviously still open for business virtually. So, I will entertain a motion to extend that date from May 4th to May, do we wanna say May 18th?
Um, that's the Governor's.
Yep, okay.
I, I've just, I, I put that data only because we've been extending it, uh, uh, you know, we've, we've extended it twice now, right? So, the first one. In accordance with the, what the Governor has done. So, if we stay with that, that's what we would do.
That makes sense. So, I will entertain a motion?
So moved, Kenny.
Second, by Jim.
Well done. Um, all in favor, roll call. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
I just wanna make sure we include Pox and Fields in the motion, or maybe it's all tied in as one, but aye.
Yeah, I, no, fair point. I think, um, what we want to do is make sure that we're amending whatever that emergency, original emergency state of order, which was applying to all, uh, town-owned properties, Town Hall, act, you know, access for the public to Town Hall, and all the other stuff that we had in there. Fair point, Kenny. Yep. Um, so was that an aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
And Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Ms. Kemet, aye. Okay, great. Thanks for bringing that up, John. Um, did, anything else on the Town Administrator's Report, John?
Uh, no, that was it. I just wanted, again, thank everybody for working as, as hard as they possibly can. The, the, uh, Town Hanson has some very good employees, and they're doing a great job. And I, I, I just thank you from me, and thank you from everyone here.
And right back at you. Um, with that, we've got approval of minutes, um, up. I will entertain a motion to approve the April 7th and 14th, um, minutes.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Okay, great. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Ms. Kemet, aye. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
I have one comment.
Oh, Mr. Mitchell, yes.
On the Town Administrator Report, John, I think you and Greer are doing a great job. I think your Town Administrator Reports are extremely informative, and I appreciate it. But one concern that I have is the impact bargaining that we have coming up. And my question is, is there any way that we can go into executive session virtually to talk about it? 'Cause we, we have these contracts that are coming up on June 30th.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, I, I've wondered about that, John. How do we do executive session virtually? Is that an oxymoron, or?
I, I don't have the answer. I have, I, I, I have thought about it myself, too, and I, I haven't been able to come up with an answer. I can reach out to Town Council. They have a wide experience across the entire state. Um, they may have an answer of what, what to do, if I could do that, and get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, would that work, Kenny?
Yes, absolutely. That being said, aye.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Ms. Kemet, aye. All right, thank you, everybody, and stay safe. Thanks again, Greer, and John, and Ryan, and Eric. Much appreciated. Thanks. Bye.